Thank you for your patience. The time is now 5:31 and we are going to call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law and we do have a quorum. We're going to start with the invocation and ask Commissioner Bettis to lead us on the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin to meet this meeting. Help us engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow close to as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the great people of this wonderful city and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask this, all these things in your name, Jesus Christ.
And the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to flag the United States of America as a true republic, with its hands, one nation, united, and invisible, with the same justice for all.
Okay. And Mark, would you please read the conflict of interest?
Yes, Mayor. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
Yes, 3P.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. And none for me?
None.
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 Great. All right. And Amanda, do we have anyone signed up for citizen communication?
Yes, ma'am, we have two.
Okay.
And the first one is Annabelle Rivilla, and she's present, Mayor, to discuss inadequate drainage.
Pat? Just please state your name.
Annabelle Rivilla. Good afternoon. I would like to start by saying thank you for the time you have allowed me to speak with you and to be able to voice our petition. I have submitted some pictures and have been reassured that you will have access to them. My parents are residents of this beautiful city. I reside here for three months out of the year to help out my elderly parents, which reside on Paloma Lane. My parents are Labro and Aida Garcia. My father will be 90 years old this year and my mother 82. Let me tell you about their home. It sits on blocks, and recently we had to put in some piers to keep the house from sinking. I understand that sometimes this will happen. However, water does play a role in helping a structure to weaken. Now, for our petition. I ask for help with the drainage canals or ditches that run along Paloma Lane. Since I have started spending time with my parents, I have noticed that the ditches are not well-maintained. The ditches are full of weeds and debris. If heavy rains or even a hurricane strikes the valley, the condition of the ditches are not prepared to take on such heavy amounts of rainwater. I did notice that some drains were installed to route the water from the east ditch to the west ditch, but is that really enough? The ditch on the east side is almost nonexistent. What if the water overflows into my parents' property, or worse, the water fails to flow properly? I would like for the city members to ponder the worst-case scenario, and believe me, it will happen, and then evaluate our petition. Please help us prevent a bigger problem for us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivilla. You mentioned the petition. Do we have a...
Mayor, we have a PowerPoint that she delivered to us, so we're going to forward to the mayor and commissioners.
Okay. Thank you. And we have her contact information?
No. Amanda?
Yes, we do.
Amanda has it, yes.
Thank you so much for your time. We'll definitely have the commission look at that and get back with you. Thank you so much.
Okay. The next one, Mayor, is Gerald Preppashaw. Address is 722 North Ice Street, and he would like to be called, and his comments is on drainage, ethics violation, EDC Board A and B. So let me give him a call.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Preppashaw. This is Amanda with the City of Harlingen. You have three minutes, and I'm going to go ahead and start the clock. You may start now.
Don't you want me to state my name and all that first?
I've already done so, but if you would like to, sir, you can do so.
No, that's okay. That's fine.
Okay. You may proceed.
Okay. I've just sitting back for a while now, not saying anything about what's going on because I actually thought change was going to come with the newly-elected mayor and commissioners, but that hasn't been. You guys are talking about drainage, but yet you want to do $9 million for parks. Those $9 million from the 4B Board can be used for quality of life, to fix drainage, water, sewer, any kind of problems in a city, even infrastructure in a city, but yet you want to spend $9 million on parks, which is not actually on anybody's list as far as the citizen goes. Okay, now, let's talk about jobs. There was a company in Harlingen that had 100 employees working for it, and very good pay, too, that just up and left. I've never heard or read anything from either the city or the EDC Board about even trying to go over there and find out what's going on, if we could help you do something. So we're back to doing everything for retail and nothing for, you know, the rest of the world. There's a couple of other things, too. Economics. You know, when you take a look at some of the parts of a city and the tree runs down, you know, and you have practically no demolitions whatsoever, which is a far cry from what happened, you know, 12 years, 13 years ago, but of course, at that time, we still, we had the National Guard. But you've got places that have warehouses, the roofs, places that have been burned up for a long time. Girders are falling, everything else, roofs are collapsing, and now one city code enforcement has gone out there and plastered, you know, condemned building on anything. No, but they'll go after some lay who's trying to work on a carport and threaten her with a fine, but they won't go out there and look at properties that are actually, should be demolished. They won't do that. Okay. Let's talk about one other thing before I go. Amanda, how much more time do I have?
You have like 15 minutes, 14?
Seconds.
Seconds? I'm sorry.
Oh, 15 minutes going. All right, well, then I'm going to save what I have to say till next meeting, but be rest assured that there's conflicts...
Your seconds are up.
Huh?
Your time is up already, Mr. Preppashaw?
Okay. Thanks, Amanda.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Amanda. Is there, and you said there was just two?
Just two, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Moving on to presentations, we have recognition to Augustine Padilla from the Public Works, Public Works Equipment Operator, recipient of the state-level distinguished award, and a recognition... We'll start with that one. B is not here, is that right?
Yes, ma'am, they're not here.
All right, okay. So, Oscar?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Oscar Garcia, Director of Public Works, for the record. The first week of February, February the 6th, staff attended an APWA conference where one of our employees received the Operator of the Year Award. But let me mention a little bit about the American Public Works Association. It serves professionals in all aspects of public works. With a worldwide membership of more than 30,000 strong, APWA includes not only personnel from local, county, state, and federal agencies, but also from the private sector who supply products and services to these professionals. As a comprehensive public works resource, APWA continues in its rich tradition of making a difference both on an individual and professional level. APWA prides itself on the ability to provide a variety of educational and networking opportunities that help public works personnel grow in their professionalism and improve the quality of life in the communities they serve. So now, let's talk about Mr. Augustine Padilla. Mr. Augustine Padilla, our Operator of the Year, has been with the City of Harlingen Public Works Department since October of 1990, 32 years. He started as a laborer, worked himself up to Operator 2. During this time, his level of dedication, professionalism, and commitment has allowed him to grow and become one of the best equipment operators for the City of Harlingen. Mr. Padilla is knowledgeable in every aspect of the operation of our street maintenance division. His attitude, performance, and attendance has allowed him to be a role model to fellow employees. His passion for his work has allowed him to train new operators within the division. He is a primary equipment operator for the Streets Division, and over the course of 32 years, he has operated numerous pieces of equipment, such as backhoe, excavator, and front end loader. He and his crew have been very instrumental with implementing in-house projects that can be appreciated citywide. It is because of his effective and efficient use of all available equipment that we can continue to offer superior service to our residents. Mr. Padilla?
I just want to say, I've been here for four months, and every day that I run into him, he always has a smile. And when he meets the residents out there, it's the same attitude. I mean, his dialogue with the residents out there is just great. We're very fortunate to have him on our staff.
Mr. Padilla? Mr. Padilla, I just want to congratulate you again on this amazing award. 30 years of service also is commendable, and we appreciate your service. It is because of you and your team that, just like Oscar said, that we'll be able to provide these services to our community. I know that you all work day in and day out in what you do, and to know that you love what you do as well, and that you have a smile on your face, that is definitely what we want here in the City of Harlingen. We appreciate your efforts, and we're so excited to present you with this award, so we are going to... Is this, is it? If I can get the commission to join me? This is incredible. I'm sure this isn't the first award that you've received, and I wish I was here to give you all of the awards and to celebrate you. We truly appreciate you. I know that these fellows are looking at public works all the time, every day, and we are so lucky to have Oscar and me and the team, and with Oscar and folks like you, Chris, and you can't assemble the teams in the entire team, so I truly, truly do appreciate it, and we'd love to take a picture with you if you'll allow us to. Ready? One, two, three. One more. Can we give Mr. Padilla another round of applause? We are going to, next time, we will acknowledge the recognition award to the Harlingen High School South Hawks basketball team that were not able to be here with us today. Moving on to item number two, approval of minutes. Are there any changes, amendments to the minutes?
If we could pull out 3M, please.
She's on item number two.
On the minutes?
Minutes. I apologize. Amanda, I'm going to send you some changes.
Okay.
So if we can approve subject to those changes?
That works. Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Lopez?
I'll make the motion to approve subject to the changes. That will be sent to Amanda.
Just a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. And we have removed item, or do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, all items with the exception of 3P, to be taken out of the consent agenda?
And 3M, please.
And M?
Yes.
P and M. Do we have a second?
I'll make...
Or did you make the motion?
No, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, pulling out P and M.
Second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 3M, consideration and possible action to approve the installation of speed humps on the 2600 block of Emerald Lake Drive, First Street, between Beck and McGregor, 1500 block of High Street.
I'd like to make an amendment to this item to include Adams Street, Adams Avenue.
Adams Street?
Adams Avenue.
Adams Avenue.
I'll make that motion.
Is this, Craig, the one that I spoke to you about? The High Street, is that correct?
High Street was the text in the video?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay. And so we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. And item 3P, consideration and possible action to approve a request from the Cameron County Election Department to use the cultural arts center located at 576, 76th Drive in Harlingen, Texas, as an early voting site for the Harlingen CISD general election. Are you just abstaining? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
And one abstention.
And one abstention, correct. Commissioner for County. Moving on to new business, item four, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending sections of the Harlingen City of Ordinance Code, Chapter 6, Article 4, animal control removal of Division 1, generally Section 6-117. Definitions: Division 1, dogs and cats; subdivision 2, license, Section 6-167, license required; exceptions, Section 6-168; proof of vaccination required for issuance, Section 6-169, issuance fees; Section 6-170, disposition of fees; Section 6-171, term of license; Section 6-172, revocation; Section 6-173, tags not transferable, and removing some wording from Section 6-202, procedure for impoundment; Section 6-203, redemption of impounded animal, vicious dog; Section 6-204, destruction of unredeemed animal, certain animals to be released only to the keeper.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Shannon Harville. I'm the interim health director, for the record. This is a, this item is a request to remove the ordinance pertaining to city licenses in reference to dogs and leaving our microchip ordinance in its place, which is newer, it's updated, and generally what it seems that all cities are kind of leaning toward, not all cities, most cities are leaning towards.
It removes the dog tag requirement from the ordinance and just leaves a microchip requirement, so.
Okay. May I ask a question here?
Sure.
Did you, did you have any meetings with the Animal Advisory Board?
Yes, we did.
Okay. So they're in a corner?
They were in favor of it as well, and I believe we actually have one of our members here. You look different tonight, I'm sorry. Who's here, but we did discuss it multiple times at the meeting, and the consent from the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee was in favor of removing the city license.
Okay, so I know that we got it sometime after 12 today, but didn't have a chance to really go through it at all. Why did it take so long to, when did you have your meetings?
We've been having monthly meetings since, I believe, September.
Okay.
It hasn't been discussed at every meeting, but it has been discussed at multiple meetings.
Okay. My next question, probably the final one, is why wasn't this part of the packet on Friday? And it got submitted to us today at noon?
I can answer that, Commissioner. Tricia Meadows, Assistant City Manager. It was part of my fault. We were reviewing the ordinance, the multiple ordinances that this will impact, so that's why it's lengthy in presenting it. So it's going to impact many ordinances. We want to make sure that we did it right, and we had the right sections of the codes before we presented to you. Apologize for that, that's why it took so long. But all it is, is just removing the language of license tag, that's it. But we want to make sure that every single ordinance is, this process will impact, it's addressed correctly.
Gabe, is it, would it be possible to have a, to avoid this kind of situation, as everybody that needs to submit, with the exception of the mayor, submit everything the way it should be by Thursday at 5?
We normally have that requirement, Commissioner, and I think we were kind of lax with this one, but I think in the future, to avoid any type of issue like this, we're just not going to accept any, any ordinances from staff that don't have the requirement and...
If I have a pass on Thursday, with the exception of the mayor, that means us and everybody else.
We can, we can do that. We can make sure that, that way you don't have to wait for a submission the day of the meeting. This should have been actually given to you on Monday. It's normally what we, normally what we do whenever we don't have an attachment, we try to make it an attachment by the following Monday. That gives you ample time to review it. I don't, I don't know why it took us so long to get it out to you today, but I apologize for that. I take the responsibility for not giving that to you sooner.
Okay, Mayor and members of the commission, I do have one concern. It's not so much with the revisions, but it's in the way the ordinance was written before. If you look at paragraph D, where it talks about...
Did you say D as in Delta?
D as in, D as in dog, very appropriately. Amending Section 6-202, procedure for impoundment, okay? The original ordinance is phrased in terms of that the person discharging the duties would enter a premises and demand, well, you know, we've got a, we do have something called the Fourth Amendment, so I would request that that information, that be revised. And that's actually in the original ordinance, not in the revision. Basically, the way the original ordinance is worded, that the animal control officer or officer enforcing the ordinance is empowered to enter upon the premises upon which a dog or cat is reported and believed to be kept and is authorized to demand the exhibition of the animal. Well, in order to enter a premises, you need a warrant.
That would be a court...
So what I would do is I would simply rephrase that, take out the word, and to read as follows: is empowered to request the exhibition of such animal, and to then and there take custody of such animal for impounding if voluntarily surrendered by the owner. Okay? So I don't have any problem with them knocking on the person's door and asking for the dog, but no one should be seizing a dog without a court order.
Did you write this? Did you write all this? Mark?
No, this is an old ordinance. This is, so this is what was...
But did you write the revisions?
No, this was, the revisions were submitted to me. The revisions, no, I did not.
Okay, but you've seen this document, and you've approved it.
I'm okay with the revisions, I'm just not okay with the original ordinance, actually.
Okay, so we're correcting the original ordinance without a court order, going in and seizing an animal?
Right.
The Constitution matters.
Yeah, so, right, so regardless of whether or not you want to approve these revisions or not, I think we need to go back and make those amendments the original ordinance. Okay.
So then I make a motion that we table this to give Commissioner Morales a chance to read it since he didn't get to, and I'd like to go through it myself and to make the appropriate adjustments. Come online with the city attorney said, and we take a look at it at a further...
I would second that table.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this item has been tabled. Thank you. Item five, consideration and possible action to continue or terminate the Hollis, Rutledge, and Associates contract. Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, when we first hired Hollis Rutledge, we said we'd keep him for a year, come back and look at the performance of the contract, and then see if we want to continue that for another year. We signed a contract in March, so at the end of this month, it'll be a year that we've had them. To date, they've, they've received one grant on behalf of the city for $24,000. They did submit another for a million, but that has not been approved yet, it's still being considered by the...
Can we back up?
Yes, sir.
What is Hollis Rutledge and Associates? What do they do?
Oh, I'm sorry. They're a grant writer for the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we hired him March of last year, so 12 months.
Yes. Well, it's a one-year contract with a one-year option to renew.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt, but continue, please.
That's right. And so it's been a year since we hired them, and so we need to decide whether we want to continue them or terminate the contract.
And at what price did we pay?
$3,000 a month, so we paid...
$3,000 total?
Yes, a month.
A month?
A month? So we paid $36,000?
Yes, sir.
And we, and if I heard you correctly, we got one grant for $24,000?
Yes.
Is that the firefighter?
Yes, that's the firefighter.
Which was already prepared, correct?
We did the majority of the work. We sent it to them to submit on our behalf, but we normally do those ourselves, and so we gave them that one to submit for us. But we had received those before from the Firehouse Foundation, and so we gave them that to have something to work on our behalf.
Do you have a recommendation, Gabe?
Well, we haven't gotten our money's worth, I don't think, yet. If we get the million-dollar grant, then it'll be, it would have worked out, but we don't know if that's going to get approved or not. We did submit that one late. That was the one that you got, Mayor, the day it was due, and so you had to sign the resolution, even though it hadn't been approved by the commission yet, so, but I asked you to do that for us, and so we got that cleared up later.
Right.
So...
So I'd be pleasantly surprised if that one was granted based on my review of the, of the grant application.
That was to Tieda, right?
Yes.
Let me ask you, Gabe, if I may. Did you give them a call to let them know that they were on the agenda?
No, it's in the contract.
It's in the contract?
Yeah.
Okay. Obviously, I have a couple of questions for you. So, from what I got and you received, they have a $5,000 downtown beach installment bench installation that's under review. They have the Firehouse Subs, $24,000 fire department equipment, correct?
That's, that was awarded, yes.
All right. That was awarded. And then they have the brick for 1.2 million that's under review, correct?
Yes.
All right. Along with that, because you and I visited them back in December, not this December, the December before, we had discussions in January and February, and in one of those Zoom meetings that we had, one of the things that they asked for was designs for projects and shovel-ready projects, okay? We at that time, which would be January of, or February of, right before this contract was signed, okay? We at the time did not have any shovel-ready projects nor designs, correct?
At that time, that's correct, yes.
All right. Now, the thing is, if they're grant writers, how do we expect them to be successful? We do, we don't have that. And that same question, where we didn't, they didn't have... And that same question, where we didn't, they didn't have the designs or the shovel-ready projects, a week ago, we met with, we sent the Congressman, and he said the same thing. We need, if he's going to succeed or be able to award us with some funds, we need shovel-ready, shovel-ready projects, we need designs. And a year later, we still are, do we have any real designs and real shovel-ready projects?
Yes, we're going to have two this year. That totaled $6 million in construction.
I guess my point to you, sir, is we hired them on, okay, without giving them a fair shot because we didn't have anything worthwhile for them to go after. And after that Zoom meeting, you and I sat down and we, you and I, brainstormed as to what we could possibly ask for, which boiled down to equipment, okay? That's all we had because we didn't have anything, okay? And I'll be the first one to say, it falls on me because I didn't ask you if we had any shovel-ready projects, okay? But, but this is the type of situation where I'm looking at it from my viewpoint right now. We desperately need more police officers. We desperately need, the lady was, is not here anymore, that just left on drainage issues, okay? What's the main thing we need? We need improvements to our infrastructure, major. If we have that, what's the next thing that's going to happen? Now we have an ability to market ourselves outside Harlingen, and then we can possibly get companies to come in, okay? It is embarrassing, sir, for me to go to McAllen and see that there's a pilot in Mercedes. You go further west, there's a Loves', and you go just north, there's another Loves' and Coles'. Those three, those three are truck stops. That means we're going to have plenty of 18-wheelers going through and stopping and fueling up. So there is a market for economic growth in the valley. We're not tapping into that. We don't have our infrastructure set up. And guess what I did yesterday, sir? I called Hollis to ask him about this. Hey, did you know you're on the agenda? Nobody called me. Nobody provided me with the courtesy. At six o'clock last night, you know where he was headed to? To Austin. Because he was going to lobby for his clients. Did we ever ask him, hey, buddy, according to this contract, to undertake certain activities relative to governmental and economic development services, including but not limited to grant research, development on behalf of the client?
Commissioner, if I may, we just didn't hire them to do drainage projects. We hired them to do grant writing for the city, and we sent them a multi-page document of every need that, that the city had as far as capital equipment goes. We sent them a list of parks that needed some help. We even had a meeting with him and all the directors here in this, in this very room to talk about those issues, and so we gave him all our needs. So they just weren't hired to do drainage, they were hired to do grant writing.
Okay, let me ask this, sorry to jump in. We have Anna Haddan, she's one of our grant writers, correct?
Yes.
And about the same amount of time that one year, how much money has she brought in for us?
Six million.
Six million?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-four thousand.
If I may ask you a question, Gabe. So you and staff have pushed to this company, you have pushed projects and data, but does a grant writer also pull? Look, P-U-L-L, not P-O-O-L. Do they scan the internet and grant organizations and money organizations seeking grants that may be applicable to our community? Is that part of the job, too?
Yes, they're supposed to.
Okay, so it's both, we push to them and they pull from the data universe?
That's correct.
I think in this case, my biggest issue with this contract, and obviously I wasn't here when it was executed, was that it was not performance-based, and it was basically, you know, what we would call a post office box, right, type of contract, where we just send them the check and they get that check no matter what, whether there's work performed or not. I know that the numerous times that I've spoken with Anna, she tells me about how much time she, she does, you know, look through where she had, there are subscriptions that the city has to see what grant would be available, and on top of that, where we are, that are just available online, that you don't have to pay a fee to do. So I know that that takes a bulk of her time, and she does recommend several to city, to the city manager, and I don't see that that's happened in this case. And again, I think it's mostly because we did not require it. There was no expectation, and so that is probably the reason why he didn't produce. But for me, the, the most, the reason why I would urge this, this commission to not renew and to allow this to expire is because when I did review the one grant that they did apply, it had so many errors. I think I spoke to Craig about it. I also, I think I called Gabe while he was on vacation, and I was very upset with the product that was before me, and I really didn't want to sign it, but I did so because there was, it was a last minute. And I would expect a grant writer to provide this information to us timely so that we're able to review it instead of just submitting things at the last minute, especially if it's going to be your only work product to, to be before this commission to consider. So for those reasons and those reasons alone, I would, I would advise this commission to not renew the contract.
You know, the, the other thing, of course, Gabe, you and I have been to a few TMLs. There are companies at TML and National League of Cities, and their sign says grant writing. And so there's plenty of statewide and national firms who do this for a living, and they obviously do it very well.
We, we do that pretty well, too, Commissioner, here with, with our department that does grant writing and special projects, so I'm looking forward to getting more grants in the future with them, so...
Yeah, we, we need to hire a bird dog to go out and flush them from the brush.
I'll make the motion to allow this contract to expire.
We have to give them 30 days' notice, Commissioner.
Well, the 30 days, 30 days.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item six, consideration and possible action to select recommended restroom facility options for Lozano Plaza and Javier?
Yes, Mayor, City Commission, for the record, my name is Javier Mendez, I'm the Parks and Rec Director. This item here, if you all recall, I had brought the item to you all for consideration for the construction of the restrooms back in June 2022. The quotes that we got, the lowest quote was 365,626. Our budget was 300,000 at that time. The commission, when they rejected the bids, they asked us to look for other options, and so what we did was we did some research. The other two options that we got is to purchase a mobile restroom for downtown, and also the third option would be is to purchase a prefab restroom where they, it's already built, they bring it down in a trailer and they sit it on a, on a base, and then we connect the utilities to it. And so the restroom price that we got is $105,995 delivered, and that is a, it equipped with four commodes, two urinals, and one complete individual ADA restroom, similar to what we have now. It's a little bit, this one's a little bit larger. The, let's see, the restroom that we got a quote from, which is a prefab, was $143,015 delivered. We would still have to prepare the, the base for, and then get the utilities to, close to the building. Staff recommends is to purchase the mobile restroom, that way it can be used not just for downtown, but primarily for downtown, but can be used for other projects or events as well, so...
Questions?
Yes, sir.
I have two of them. One is, could we access 4B money to do it properly and well? And question number two is, what's the wind rating of this facility?
The prefab?
Correct.
The prefab, what they'll do is they windstorm certify it, it's here from Texas, and so, so they'll certify the building, they anchor it down, and so they'll give us a windstorm certificate so we can insure it.
And, okay, so it can be insured?
Yes, sir.
And do you know the specs of wind capacity?
I, I do not know, but they would have to meet our, they would have to meet our windstorm area, our tier for our area.
Right, because it's different on the east side of the interstate versus the west side of the interstate, like the wind cares.
Commissioner, I would like to point out, though, that for the mobile bathroom, you would need to purchase another vehicle to tow it, right?
Yeah, so we, we would ask if we could purchase a vehicle with that to be able to pull this unit. Like I said, it's a little bit larger, empty it's 6,000 pounds, full it's 10,000 pounds.
Okay, so, so you're talking about anchoring a prefab bathroom facility, and then you're talking about unanchoring it and moving it someplace else?
No, Commissioner, they're, they're two different, two different proposals.
Yes, 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 okay.
Right, so the mobile restroom would be like what we have now, it's just, you know, it's on a trailer, we just move it.
No, it does have a handicap ramp, correct?
Yes, sir. So there is a, the back end of the trailer is the ADA restroom.
Our current bathroom has four, they're all unisex, and they're not handicap accessible.
So which one are you recommending?
Our, we're recommending the mobile restroom.
Plus a new truck.
Not, not the, not the prefab, but the mobile trailer restroom.
What's a cost differential?
I'm sorry?
Cost differential, please.
So the, the unit itself is 105,995 delivered, and then if we bought the truck, it'd be 50,000, so that'd be 155,000, 156. The restroom, the prefab restroom is 143,015 delivered, and then we would have to prep the site for the base, the caliche, and then run the utilities to it.
Okay, the, you're spending 50,000 on the truck, will that truck be used for other work purposes for the city in the meantime?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but then, of course, there's depreciation on the truck, and the truck has to be replaced somewhere down the road, so that adds to the cost.
I think the benefit of it being mobile and it being able to use for other events, like say Realfest or something else, I think that, that, that's a good thing. So I would favor the mobile with the truck. I agree with Javier because just being able to take it to different places is a good thing, in my opinion.
Javier, I have a question, because, let me say this before my question, I'm really impressed with these mobile restrooms because every time we, there's an event, they're like really, they're super clean, they always have soap and all the stuff that women and men want also in the restroom.
We want.
But they just really, very, very clean. So anyhow, but I did, the one thing that was concerning, obviously, is, is not being handicap accessible, so this would fix that. But they really are clean, and, and people tell me that, too, that when we have events that, that the restrooms are something that they feel comfortable, especially your eating and things like that. So my question is, like, in the parks that we have restrooms, what's it like, what's the upkeep on that, the maintaining of those restrooms, and is it hard to clean? What are, what are your guys telling you about the upkeep, like in McCalvi or any other, other park?
Yeah, so it's, it's difficult, so we do get a lot of vandalism. Matter of fact, when we had the run or the walk with, for Commissioner Morales at Rangerville, about a week before, they went in, they destroyed all the fixtures. Our guys went in, they replaced them to be able to open up for the run, the walk, plus the rentals that we have there at Rangerville. But it seems like a constant or consistent issue that we have is vandalism, and there's nobody, there's no attendant or anything, so they're just open, we close them, we open them in the morning, six, and then we close them at night, between nine and 10 o'clock.
So security, I think, and then the cleanliness, and, and then the manpower to clean another restroom, right?
Right.
So I think, I, I, I like the idea of the, the initial plan of having the restrooms out there because I do think that there's a lot of shopping that goes on in, in that district, but I don't know about having this type of structure. It seems like the mobile would, would be more cost-effective when you think of the maintenance and, and all of the work that the Parks Department has to do to keep that up, up and, and clean.
So the mobile is self-contained unit with water, cleansing agents, hygiene for wastewater?
We get, so what it has is, it has a holding tank and a pump, so we could hook it up to a, a drain, or it can be self, self-sustain, or, I guess, self-sustain. It's like the one that we have now, we can move it anywhere, and, how many gallons is that? 100 gallons? It's 100 gallons, I think it's like 3,000 flushes. And so we do that sometimes when we go where there's no sewer line. But we, we provide all the, the cleaning supplies, the toilet paper, because it takes a special type of toilet paper.
Correct.
And hand cleanser and stuff.
You've sold me on the idea of the mobile unit.
I know what I'm thinking, it's a long day.
I was making a motion to follow Javier's recommendation to go with the mobile bathroom and purchase the three-and-a-quarter-ton truck, correct?
Yes.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you, Javier. Item seven, consideration and possible action to approve funding for an agreement between the Development Corporation of Harlingen and UTRGV Office of Workforce and Economic Development. Beverly?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here tonight to request your consideration and possible action to approve a funding agreement between the Development Corporation of Harlingen and UTRGV Office of Workforce, Workforce and Economic Development. On January 21st, I mean 31st, the EDC Board approved 58,000, we're going to have to make some changes, the total is now 59,000, for an agreement between the EDC and the UTRGV Workforce and Economic Development Office to basically hire a professional to work in Harlingen to provide small businesses in Harlingen the opportunity to services that UTRGV offers and other economic development and entrepreneurship activities. So in your packet, you should have the agreement. There are a few changes that we would need to make to the agreement, including adding some language in there that specifies the amount of time that this individual would be spending in Harlingen, and quantify that a little bit. Does that suffice on the, and then also to change some of the language that refers to 200 square feet of office space. We want to make that basically space available for them to adequately perform the services that are listed in the Statement of Services. The current office space that we have at the Harlingen EDC is only 148 square feet, and so we just want to make sure that we're not held accountable to the 200. But they would have adequate space to perform those services. And then there is one other change in that, we would be adding information about the EDC being a governmental unit, so just some legal language there that our attorney recommended. I also have Ron from UTRGV Office of Workforce and Economic Development here to answer any questions about the program itself, and I'll open it up to questions.
I just want to, sorry, I've been talking to Beverly about this since October, she's been chasing this down. I'm really, really, really happy that you've been able to achieve this. I knew that you've put in a lot of work on this. And I'm really pumped with the results that this will help us produce. So thank you so much, Beverly.
Thank you.
So Beverly, I have a question. Is there any issue with housing UTRGV in TSDC?
So we have talked with Claudia, their Vice Chancellor of Workforce Development. And they feel like they can come to an agreement. They also are gonna work with UTRGV to see how they can partner up and make some activities happen for them as well. So they're in agreement. We just have to make that formal.
Wonderful. And in this contract, should we have another location for them at another point? Maybe we are focusing on small business and our goals towards having an incubator and other types of one-stop shop, right, for small businesses? Would they be able to move from the location to this new location or not? Because it's listed in the contract.
I think that could be addressed if that time came. This is only a year contract. And so I don't see that necessarily happening right away as far as them needing to move. But also what that does is if they do move, even within the year, it changes the, kind of the focus of small businesses being able to go to one place to find help and services. So by, you know, staying in one place is gonna be helpful. But if the need arises where we need to move them, it shouldn't be a problem. There's some information in there in the agreement that would allow us to come back to the table and, you know, or we can make sure that that language is in there to change that location if needed.
Great. Well, you know, I'm excited. I want this to happen. But I have some questions for Ron.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
Sure, of course.
So at the EDC meeting, there were all the different types of resources available. And I know that there was a question of the individual that would be responsible for Harlingen. And there was talk that if we weren't able to hire someone, or UTRGV wouldn't be able to hire someone immediately, that it would be someone that works in one of those centers. Is that still the case? Or what was the solution to that issue?
So upon ratification of this agreement, we'll go ahead and post next week. And the good news also, and I believe I had mentioned it that night, is that City of Mission is also doing it. As a matter of fact, I was at their ratification meeting there. So we'll be able to post two people, post two positions. The agreement start date is May first to allow a little buffer. And the intent anyway is to utilize the directors. There's eight directors within kind of the comprehensive portfolio. So all of them, first of all, one thing we do is bring all the directors with a team locally and kind of devise the local strategy, which includes a chamber to ensure that, you know, we have alignment there. But then they would be doing the cross-training on all the programs. In the event that it's delayed, that we can't find somebody by May first, yeah, they'll, staff, not so much the directors, but we have about thirty staff under the full office. So we'd be rotating out so we still have somebody here forty hours. In the event that the applicant pool is just not good at all, something that I'd recommend, and I don't know if we need to ratify that, is maybe just pushing the start date for any kind of payment. Because really, the payment is really for the salary. So if we're not paying anybody's salary, we can begin the services in kind of an interim level and then just push back when we actually have a start date. But, you know, applicant pools are kind of tricky. But we've been kind of putting out fillers. And the program specialist level, so the equivalent at the university level is called a program specialist. Those tend to be good response for applicant pools because they don't require a tremendous amount of experience. So those that are fresh grads would qualify. They've had some kind of economic or customer service or, again, they're gonna have a whole litany of resources to train them, so.
And it will be a Spanish speaker?
Yes.
Okay, great. And one last question. We talked about training for, specific to the city of Harlingen. Will that be a component of their training to understand what, you know, what goes on with planning and zoning and permitting? And so when they come to start working here, they'll already have that knowledge. Is that right?
Yeah, I use the term triage. So this person, we want to give him a bit of knowledge on a microscope to be able to kind of soft-hand off to the experts. But that also goes for maybe just potential individuals that might be interested in going to school there. So it's gonna be a semi-recruiting office as well. So things like financial aid and things like, they'll be able to kind of do a soft handoff for those services.
Okay, and they'll also be dedicated days of, in the field, in the businesses?
Yeah, specifically with EDC's business retention specialists. So that should go hand in hand because, you know, a big focus is who's already in the community. You know, a byproduct may be bringing in new businesses. And obviously, we want to incubate and grow that. But really, the hardening and resilience of who's already here. And they, generally small business, they're not gonna come knocking on our door. So field work in this, in alignment with EDC, that's gonna have to happen.
Awesome. I love it. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement subject to the amendments that we discussed and that you've presented to the commission.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, public hearing and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to renew the Harlingen Juvenile Curfew Ordinance restricting the hours for juveniles seventeen years of age and younger inside the city limits of Harlingen. Chief?
I'm Mayor Commissioners, Michael Custer, your chief of police. I must have sent you the wrong ordinance, or wrong PowerPoint, Sergio. This is from a while back. That's my fault. There's not a lot there that I was doing anyways. But this is to...
I guess he can't hear you. He needs you to speak into it.
Okay, this is to renew the curfew ordinance for minors under the age of seventeen. Every three years, it's required by law to review the ordinance and renew it. Otherwise, it expires. I can tell you, currently, it has expired. It expired mid-year last year and got sidetracked, but for whatever reason, we're here now to renew it. So I can tell you, in twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, we had thirty-seven enforcements of the curfew. In twenty twenty-one, it was thirty-one. And then last year, it was only seventeen due to the fact it was expired halfway through the year. So what is the curfew ordinance? It's, like I said, for minors under the age of seventeen. And it's from ten-thirty PM on Sunday through Friday till six AM that following morning. Saturday and Sunday from twelve oh one midnight or just after midnight to six AM on those two days. So a juvenile out during those hours can be stopped, issued a citation for being out there in those hours. It also allows for a parent to be issued a citation too. But the ordinance allows or mandates that there must be two warnings to the parent before they can be actually issued a citation. I can tell you, I think all we bring on, I think only two occasions is issued warnings to two different parents.
So this is just housekeeping? Just renew what we have?
Exactly. I mean, I didn't change anything in the ordinance. It's just asking for the renewal so we can, starting enforcing it again. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I'll make the motion to renew the ordinance.
Second.
Hang on, hang on. We need a public hearing on that?
Is there no questions? Okay, at this, at this point, we will open it up to a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against the adoption of, well, the renewing of the juvenile curfew ordinance? Having no one here to speak for or against, we will now close the public hearing. And I will ask the city attorney to read the ordinance.
The caption is, "An ordinance amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Subchapter Part One, General Ordinances, Chapter Thirty-four, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article Eight, Curfew, Extending the Curfew for Persons Under Seventeen Years of Age."
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief. Now we have board appointments. Do we have any board appointments? We'll start with Commissioner Kinsley.
No, ma'am.
None.
None?
None.
None?
None.
Item ten is executive session. Item ten A pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, regarding the purchase, lease, or value of real estate if the deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city of Harlingen in negotiations with a third person regarding some of the following projects in Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, regarding commercial and financial information from business projects with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations and to discuss or deliberate financial or other incentives relating to Project Breeze with the HEEDC. Consultation with, and item B is consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.0711A regarding or contemplated litigation. Item ten C, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to receive communication protected by attorney-client communication privilege. And do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, the time is now six thirty-two. And we are going to be in executive session. And we hope to be out shortly.
The time is now seven fifteen. And we are back from executive session. And on to item number eleven, consideration and possible action regarding item ten A as discussed in executive session in regards to Project Breeze. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. There'll be no action on item twelve. And that is our meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good night.